Daniel Tompkins, excuse me. They let him out.
I know, he said I was a dingaling. Here you hear these good and happy citizens of Mendon. As there's some times down for I R I break the news. Your Board of Selectmen has charged a group of you to run festivities for this town's 350th birthday. The committee is pleased to announce that we have scheduled a year's worth of events beginning this August. Or September, I can't read it. We invite all of you to join us at a hen beed supper, September 10th, in Clubstool. A costume party dinner dance, October 29th, at the Grand View Ballroom. A turkey trot on Wednesday morning. A Santa Parade and tree lighting on December 2nd of the year 2016. In our anniversary year of 2017, we have the first annual New Year's Day Late Nipmaw Polar Fun. An ice fishing derby in February. A St. Patrick's Day celebration on March 10th at the Enzo Sports Hall. In April, an Easter egg hunt. In May, the actual 350th birthday of Mendon. We will celebrate the day early on May 14th. Time and location to be announced, Cape for all. In June, we're going to have a Civil War or Revolutionary War reenactment. In July, the Horables Parade and a fireman's muster. In August, a block party in the center of town. In September, on Saturday the 2030, formal banquet and dance at the Grand View Ballroom, followed on September 24th by the grand parade and fireworks on the afternoon and evening of Sunday, September 24th. I thank you for your attention. Oh wait, a warning to all gentlemen who are clean shaven. Within the next few months, you must purchase your shaving permit or suffer the penalties. Be warned.
Thank you very much. Sir, you didn't tell us your name.
Oh, I'm Sir Kevin Ruddin, 46, Cape Road.
Thank you. Was Cape Road in existence back then?
A part of two, uh, Robins Church, right, sir.
Right, Cape Highway.
Sir Kevin of Ruddin.
Sir Kevin, yeah. Alright. So, the point of that, Amendment 350th coming up, please pay attention and participate. I believe everybody's in the room. The town clerk will show that the return of the warrant was duly posted, properly served. We're gonna dispense with the reading of the warrant. I have a list of non-registered voters and non-residents who attend the town meeting tonight. I'm gonna go through them. Dr. Michael Fitzpatrick from DVT. Jean Berthold, who is our principal assessor. Jeanette Malafont on Tower Road with, uh, son-in-law, it says. Andrew Marfek with son-in-law. Is son-in-law here too with a name, or? Okay, whatever. Bill McHenry, our housing coordinator. Jim Newman, our town administrator. Brad Petrisian from the Telegram Gazette. Michelle Sanford from the Town Crier. Dr. Joseph Miroczek, Superintendent of the Mendon Upland School District. Brandon Moss, who is our town council. Is there any other non-registered voters whose names I haven't got? I got everybody? Karine Cook, I'm sorry, Karine Cook from the Wilford Daily News. You're allowed, alright. If there's no objections, we're gonna allow them in the room tonight. Uh, none of you, the way this works, if you're a registered voter, you need to be sitting to this side. If you're a non-registered voter, you sit over there. So if you're sitting over there, you're not voting. I guess a registered voter can go sit there if they don't want to vote, but wouldn't be less... Oh, we got a few more. Alright, Mike Evans, who's a student. Kayla Salguera, Madison Chase. And Dylan Elliott. So you guys are students from Nipmaw, correct? Are you guys students of Mr. Spindell's class?
Yes.
He told me to tell you today that if you take a selfie with me at the end of the meeting, he'll give you extra credit. No promises that that's what I was told. Alright, emergency exit. We got a door over here, we got two in the back. There's actually one backstage as well. There's no smoking in the hall tonight. Typically, we ask that you remove your hats. We're gonna allow hats to stay on tonight in memory, you know, in honor of the 350th. If you have a cellphone, and I bet almost everybody here does, please turn it to silent. Vibrate, anything that makes no noise. Um, I don't wanna hear any phones ringing tonight. If for some reason you need to use your phone and it requires you to actually speak, please go out in the hallway. Uh, there's no recording of tonight's meeting. Now that Mr. Ruddin is done, I have given Cable A permission to record this meeting tonight, so they're gonna be in the back corner there recording. Annual town meeting is not subject to open meeting laws. I'll go through the rest of the ground rules in one second. Let's stand for the pledge of the... Alright, other than the students that are here, is there anybody that's never been to a town meeting before? Brand new, have no clue what's about to happen? Okay, the first thing is, anybody that hasn't done it has to come up here. We're gonna do a little duet, we're gonna sing. Actually, that's not true. Uh, my name's Jay Byer, I'm the town moderator. This is Margaret Von Duranco, she is the town clerk. The Board of Selectmen is sitting over there. The Finance Committee is sitting over here. I'm not gonna go and introduce them all, they can introduce themselves if they choose to speak tonight. We have several other pointed and, uh, officials, employees of the town. Uh, personally, I'd like to thank every one of you. Fincom, Selectmen, anybody that works for the town volunteers for the work you put in for the town. It's what makes our town run. Alright, basic ground rules. I'm gonna be as brief as I can. All questions and statements are gonna be directed to me. There's only one speaker in time. If you wish to speak, we have a microphone set up over here. We got a microphone set up over there. I'm gonna ask that you come to the microphone to speak. So, if there's an issue you wanna speak to, someone gets up and comes to the mic, you wanna speak as well, come and get in line, okay? Don't just stand out there and wait. Uh, we need to be able to hear everybody. The recording needs to hear everybody, so please come up to the microphones. When you're recognized, please, please speak loudly and clearly. Before you begin your comments, state your name and your address. Because of the way the mics are pointed, you can face the microphones. Typically, we have you face in front of the room. Avoid multi-part questions. Please be brief. Lengthy oratories are not appreciated in many ways, shape, or form. I like to say, please don't repeat yourself. I like to say, please don't repeat yourself. So, don't repeat yourself, okay? Um, you may only comment on the issues in front of us. Um, no questions are allowed for which the town meeting doesn't have jurisdiction. We will observe courtesy and decorum at the meeting. Do not refer to anyone by their name. Please refer to them as the previous speaker. No personal comments, no accusations. If it becomes necessary that I ask someone to stop, I have a sort of a procedure I'm gonna go through with the bottom lines. If I feel you're getting out of order, I'm gonna ask you to stop speaking and try and get you back on course. All questions of order are decided by the moderator. Motions and amendments must be submitted in writing. Um, all amendments have to have a positive motion, meaning you can't say, "I propose to not do something." You have to propose to do something. Uh, we will deal with reconsideration if that comes up later. I'll explain it. If more than the majority is required, I'll let you know what that is. Uh, if you have any questions, if you don't know what to do, you're confused, you wanna do something you don't know how, raise your hand, we'll try and help you get there. Other than that, is anybody, everybody clear on how we're gonna do this tonight? We're also gonna use the consent calendar on multiple articles, and we are taking some of these articles in a little bit different order. A couple of things have to be done before Article 3 and 4, so we've kind of rearranged it. You'll see them all up on the screen. And with that said, let's get started with Article 1. Mr. Moroly.
Article 1, Amendment Finance Committee recommends the town...
Oh wait, slam, I'm sorry. We forgot something. We have the town dedication, Mr. Rio.
Yes.
Sorry.
Mark Rio, Full Old Drive. Uh, we have dedicated this year's annual town report to the Board of Selectmen would like to dedicate the town report to Shirley Jean Smith. Shirley dedicated countless hours to the town amendment in her effort to make our community a better place. Her amazing spirit lives on in the hearts of many she has touched. Shirley Smith, who served on Mass Bank Committee from 2010, 2014. Served on the zoning bylaw review committee from 2007 to 2014. Served on the town coordinator role committee in 2012. And was elected water commissioner from 2003 to 2006. Today, we have our Board of Selectmen's letter. Ben and Board of Selectmen, Chairman Mark Rio, Rich Schofield, and Chris Burke, as well as the town administrator Kimberly Newman and our executive assistant Diane Willoughby, have been working very diligently to improve professionalism, communication, and efficiency of our town government. As always, the board looks for ways to alleviate the tax burden on the residential taxpayer by bringing in more commercial business as well as resolving revolving revenue. We were successful in negotiating a TIF agreement with DC Bates to relocate their business to Mendon. This 10-year agreement will provide the town with a total recurring revenue of $330,000 during this term. With the help of the town administrator, we were able to sign a lease with Blue Wave Capital for solar that will provide the town with $1.8 million over the next 20 years. This lease involves the property 116 across from the Mendon Rapid. We started receiving payments on the land in July of 2015, and the solar farm is on track to be operational by the end of 2016. There are potential future cost savings for the town with this project that could provide lower-cost electricity. The board also negotiated a pile agreement for the Misco Hill Middle School solar project. This agreement provides the town with $7,000 additional revenue per year while the project reduces energy costs for the school, subsequently saving tax dollars. On top of attracting commercial business, the board was able to return nearly $50,000 in excess tax levying. Although this is not a large sum of money, we recognize that tax dollars should be, should not be expended unless absolutely necessary. If we have an opportunity to give taxpayers relief, we will take action to do so. In our continued effort to improve efficiency and reduce, reduce costs, we were able to successfully negotiate contracts with three of our unions. These negotiations were done to promote fairness to both the unions and the taxpayers. These negotiations were coupled with the compensation study produced by UMass Boston Edward J. Collins Junior Center for Public Management. The study was done to help ensure that employees were being properly compensated and to establish a pay scale that provides the town with tools as we look toward the future. In October, the board established a taxation aid committee, which is tasked with implementing and administering the taxation aid law under Mass General Law Chapter 60, Section 380. Uh, it says, "Should the town accept the law in the future town meeting?" We did do that in March. Uh, it will, uh, the town will be able to accept donations to establish an elderly and disabled taxation fund for the purpose of defraying the real estate taxes of low-income elderly and disabled persons. The board is sensitive to the fact that there are elderly residents who are on a low fixed income, and we are taking actions to ensure that the town amendment is doing everything possible that the law allows to assist these residents. The board faced a hurdle when the police trailer offices and town hall basement became a health concern. Town administrator Kimberly Newman took swift action to establish a solid plan that would rectify the situation. This involved moving two offices out of the basement and into the upper levels of the town hall. The town hall basement was renovated with community preservation funds and did not require any increase in taxes to complete the project. The project idea was presented to the Board of Selectmen in January, and the bulk of the construction was completed by July. This is just one example of the importance of having a town administrator who has the ability to act swiftly and think out of the box to get things done. In November, the town signed the Community Contact Agreement with the Baker Administration. The administration has been an incredible partner to local government in their first year in office. The Community Contact Program will provide Mendon assistance in further developing our capital improvement plan. It will also assist in establishing and improving infrastructure that promotes economic development. While the board is working to improve the town, we recognize that Mendon has a special character and heritage that we all want to preserve. The town was awarded a $60,000 grant for a town hall campus study. This study will take an in-depth look at the town hall, library, and former fire station to determine their best use as well as location of the area. This will play an important role in maintaining our historic character while utilizing the valuable infrastructure that has so much potential. In efforts to ensure our availability to residents, we held multiple productive coffee hours over the course of the year. The residents engaged in meaningful discussions and helped our, our other residents understand the happenings of the town. The board wants residents to know, we are here working for you. If you have concerns or need help, you should feel comfortable reaching out to us. The year of 2015 has brought about a causative change to our town that will bring Mendon in a new direction that promotes a more efficient government. Our goal going forward is to work together to maintain the character of our town while also working hard to make our town more orderable place to live.
Thank you, Mr. Rio. I also forgot, we skipped over Mr. Moroly. Would you read the Fincom report? Oh, before he does that, we have one other non-resident, Mike Zerella, from the Fire Department, sitting in the non-resident side. And we got another name coming my way. John Mancini, who's here for Art, was 26, 27, and 29. Where is he? Oh. Hi.
Mr. Moderator, the, uh, the report of the, the Fincom and the letter is in the front of the book. Unless anybody really has a burning desire for me to read this, or they'd like to get to it, I'm gonna suggest that we dispense with the reading while everybody reads their own if they'd like in the book. And we move to the first article if that's acceptable.
Works for me. Does everybody have one of these books? This is the working document of the night. Everything that happens is in that book. Alright, Mr. Moroly, you get your wish. Article 1.
Article 1, Amendment Finance Committee recommends the town vote that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as proposed by the Finance Committee presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding is being from available free cash, another line item, another article, or some combination that will be reduced by the same amount, and is so moved.
Second, discussion.
We must have a balanced budget, and such will be presented to the town this evening. This article ensures that the budget remains balanced after any proposed or agreed amendments to it.
Is there any further discussion? It's been moved consecutively as read in Article 1. I'm not gonna read it again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Passes unanimously. Article 2. Um, one second. Yeah, Article 2 is gonna be part of the consent calendar, so we're gonna go directly to Article 15. Mr. Ruddin.
I move that the town votes will authorize the Board of Assessors pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 268A, Section 21A, to appoint one of its members to perform designated field agent slash data listed duties, with said duties to be compensated from the stipend paid to said Board of Assessors.
Discussion, Mr. Ruddin.
Uh, in all 351 cities and towns throughout Massachusetts, the assessing department has people performing the function, which either known as field agent or data collector. The best way to relate it to you folks is when something is built, when addition is built, or something new is built, uh, these people go out and measure the additions, uh, and to know what to assess the property. And when you hear the, the expression, "new growth", uh, talked about in finances, that is where the new growth figure comes from. In Mendon, the Board, the three-member Board of Assessors has been performing that function, and each member has been receiving a stipend. We have one long-term member about to retire later this year. Uh, we have one of the, uh, other two members has more time than the third member, which is me, uh, to go out and do this. So, what we are proposing is not adding or creating a new position, not adding any new money. Uh, you will see in the salary article coming after this, we just want the authority to say, "This person's doing the bulk of the work. We are reallocating the money to give that person, uh, more of the stipend than the other two members will get." And, uh, we checked with the State Conflict of Interest Commission, and they recommended that we come to with such an article, similar to several years ago, um, one of the members of the Board of Selectmen wished to be appointed to the Conservation Commission, and he did a similar article. So we're just getting the bulk board and letting the town meeting know what we're doing. Again, this is no additional money, no new positions, just reallocating our resources.
Is there further discussion or questions? It's been moved consecutively that the town vote to authorize the Board of Assessors pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 268A, Section 21A, to appoint one of its members to perform designated field agent data listery duties, with said duties to be compensated from the stipend paid to the Board of Assessors. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Passes unanimously. The reason we took that ahead is because that determines what the numbers are in Article 3. Mr. Moroly.
Article 3, Amendment Finance Committee recommends the town vote to fix the salaries and compensations of the elected officials of the town for FY17 as follows, and is so moved.
Uh, before, alright, before you read them. If you wish to hold any of those items, say "hold" as they're read, and we will discuss them later. Everybody understand what I mean by the "hold" process? Basically, if you wanna ask a question about any of them, say "hold". We'll vote everything else and discuss it or try to get questions. Go ahead, Mr. Moroly.
Line item 510A, Board of Health Chairman, $225. Board of Health Member 2, $175. Board of Health Member 3, $175. Line item 175A, Planning Board Chairman, $225. Member 2, $175. Member 3, $175. Member 4, $175. And Member 5, $175. Line item 122A, Selectmen Chairman, $2,200. Member 2, $2,000. Member 3, $2,000. Line item 141A1, Board of Assessors, Member 1, $7,400. Member 2, $200. Member 3, $200. Line item 114A, Moderator, the goose egg. Line item 161A, Town Clerk, $54,666. Line item 294A, Tree Warden, $3,334. Line item 422A2, Highway Surveyor, $95,068.
Second. Is there any discussion on any of that? It's been moved consecutively to fix the salaries and compensations of the elected officials for the town for FY17. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Passes unanimously. Alright, Article 4. Article 4 is gonna be in your book. Uh, starting on page, what do I mean?
6.
Page 6, thank you. Uh, again, we're not gonna read every single line item when we go through these. Uh, they're gonna be read in the governmental groups that they're in. If you wish to hold any of those line items, say "hold" loud and clear, we'll mark it off. When we're all done going through it, we will first find out if you just have a question that can be answered quickly, and if so, we'll do so. If there's more discussion, we'll vote everything through. If it hasn't been held, then we'll go back and discuss the held items. Does everybody understand? Mr. Moroly, your honor.
Article 4, Amendment Finance Committee recommends the town vote to raise and appropriate the sums of money as read under Article 4 to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, and to provide for a reserve fund for the ensuing year, and is so moved.
Second.
And we'll read the subtotals for each department, the, the number of the department, the title of the department, and then the, the subtotal for that department. Starting with Department 122, Selectmen, subtotal $39,932. 131, Finance Committee, subtotal $79,000. 135, Town Accountant, $48,430. Department 141, Assessors, $88,995. 145, Town Treasurer Collector, $146,784. 151, Town Council, $80,000. 161, Town Clerk, $56,141. 162, Elections and Registration, $19,720. 165, Engineering Consultant Services, $4,000. 171, Conservation, $14,975. 175, Planning Board, $2,125. 176, Zoning Board, $3,827. 179, Land Use Committee, $50. 195, Town Reports, $2,250. 196, Building of Prior Year, there aren't one at this point. 199, Town Hall Services, $460,431.
All.
Which line?
199, A2, Town Administrator's salary.
Any others?
Nope.
Anybody else? Okay, keep going.
200, Public Safety, $167,492. 210, Police Department, $1,320,828. 220, Fire Department, $642,275. 241, Building Inspector, $51,206. 242, Gas.
We have 54, 206, the building inspector.
Sorry, $54,206, to clean my glasses. 242, Gas Inspector, $5,300. 243, Plumbing Inspector, $4,250. That's $4,200. 244, Sealer, Rook, Waits and Measures, $1,500. 245, Electrical Inspector, $14,525. 291, Emergency Management, $4,650. 292, Dog Officer, $16,080. 294, Tree Warden, $28,684. 299, Dispatching, $225,878. Onto the schools. 301, Mendon Upland Regional School District, $9,442,246. 310, Blackstone Valley Vocational School, $920,62. Public Works and Facilities, 421, Road Machinery, $65,498. 422, Highway Construction and Maintenance, $493,291. 423, Snow and Ice Removal, $159,000. 424, Streetlights, $19,500. 450, Water Department, $170,600. 491, Soldiers and Sailors' Graves, $100. 510, Board of Health, $420,700. 541, Council on Aging, $91,954. 543, Veterans Benefits, $23,800. 610, Library, $230,225. 630, Parks and Recreation Department, $86,051. 691, Historical Commission, $250. 692, Memorial Day, $400. 710, Retirement Debt Principal, $452,000. 751, Interest on Long-Term Debt, $150,128. 911, Worcester County Retirement, $459,039. 912, Workers Compensation, $23,750. 913, Unemployment Insurance, $500. 914, Health Insurance, $758,000. 915, Long-Term Disability Insurance, $12,950. 916, Medicare, $46,000. 919, Police and Fire Accident Insurance, $20,235. 945, Property and Casualty Insurance, $83,000. Special Articles for Cyclical Inspection Program Update Valuation, Police Matching Grants, $19,000. Other expenses, including assessors' overlay and local aid assessments, $123,856. Grand total, $17,804,463, and is so moved.
Second. Mr. Moderator, one more. Certainly. The last, uh, three items actually are outside of the law, so they should be going to the records of this. Special Articles and other expenses, apologies. Alright, so I heard one "hold". Is there any other "holds" that I didn't hear? Somebody had a question, didn't say "hold" then, but wants to? Okay. Since I already know what's happening with the particular "hold", we're going to... hold, we are going to vote all of this room. We'll go back and discuss the one item that was hold afterwards. Does everybody understand? Is there any further discussion on the town budget? Seventeen million dollars, you guys are about to spend. I bet none of you have done that in the last fifteen minutes. All right, it's been moved and seconded to set the town budget at seventeen million eight hundred four thousand four hundred and sixty-three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, uh, we had a hold on a particular line item. Mrs. Cataldo, I believe you are the holdee. Please come down to the microphone.
Mr. Moderator, I have an amendment here that I'd like to present to the voters. I move to amend Article Four, line 199A2, by striking the word one hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars and replacing it with ninety thousand dollars.
Second. Discussion, Mrs. Cataldo.
When the town administrator was hired, and we had this discussion at the last special town meeting, when I did the same thing to reduce the salary line to the second year of her contract, the third year of her contract, the original contract which was signed, was the ninety thousand dollars. In the interim, the town administrator applied for another job in another town and was supposedly offered that job, came back to the Board of Selectmen looking to increase her salary, which I believe is unjust to the taxpayers of this town when she signed a three-year contract when she was hired by the town of Menden. I, for one, sat on the committee, went out and researched the towns comparable to the town of Menden to support the salary the Board of Selectmen agreed to in those three years. That is why I'm standing up here before you asking that you reduce the salary to the original contract. Her contract states, that is, it is subject to town meeting appropriation. The attorney will tell you that there is a potential or could be a liability to the town for the lawsuit. Could be. Anybody can sue the town. If the town administrator chooses to sue the town of Menden, then that is not someone that I believe we want working and representing this town.
Mr. Moroli, what Finance Committee recommendation?
The Men and Finance Committee recommends the town support the town administrator's salary at one seventeen thousand seven forty-two, as agreed upon in the binding contract negotiated and signed by Menden Selectmen in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 41, Section 109, Town Manager or Administrator Employment Contracts. Our current town administrator came from a position as a city manager in the mid- in the Midwest after returning to her hometown of Redon to be close to her sister and raise their young families together. During the winter of two thousand fifteen-sixties, she was approached by a professional employment firm on behalf of the town of Canton, Massachusetts, and was chosen as the best candidate out of forty applicants to replace their retiring town administrator. The offer to become Canton's administrator would have increased her salary to over one hundred and thirty-five thousand and would have included unlimited use of, of a Canton Town telephone and a paid cell phone. When told the town administrator was claiming to exercise the clause in her employment contract that allowed her to leave, the Board of Selectmen considered the cost of another town administrator's search, and that the town would have to pay in salary to replace her, and offered to renegotiate her contract and raise her pay to the level they felt would be necessary to hire a replacement in order to save a great deal of money and time and effort. She accepted that offer in good faith and decided to stay, passing up the new opportunity. Since Mass. General Law 41, Section 108N confers the authority to enter into an employment contract with the town administrator appor- upon the Board of Selectmen, the town of Menden is bound by that agreement without any type of ratification at town meeting. As such, the town's failure to fund that agreement could result in a breach of contract. Since the town administrator turned down a better offer based on that agreement, her damages because of a breach could be significant. The cost of defending just the discovery phase of a lawsuit is estimated by Town Council to exceed fifty thousand dollars, and the overall defense would require more than twice that amount, and none of that expense would be recoverable. If the town were to lose such a suit, the cost could be astronomical. In summary, the Finance Committee believes the town is legally and morally obligated to fund this salary.
Is there further discussion? Mrs. Cataldo, come up to the microphone if you wish to speak. And that goes for everybody else. I'm going to ask it. Nobody repeats themselves, and we maintain respectability.
Mr. Moderator, I would actually like to, um, make a correction to Mr. Moroli because I have Canton-
Previous speaker.
Previous speaker, I'm sorry. The Canton minutes right here in front of me. The town administrator was an applicant of thirteen candidates that applied for that position, thirteen, and there was, it was a committee. It wasn't an outside firm who did it. Since she, since the town administrator did not accept the job, they have now gone out and hired a committee, an outside firm, which I have those minutes to reflect it.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Renee Taylor, Nineteen Kelly, you were stating that there would be ramifications of a possible lawsuit. Would that not be so for any other employee, whether they're under contract or not, that they would feel that it's unjust for themselves not to receive such a sizable increase in their pay should they be offered possibly a job elsewhere? So now this opens up a can of worms for how many other people that can come forward for the same thing with as many lawsuits to come, come thereafter.
See if we can get you to answer that. One of the things you'll know at town meetings, I can't require an answer to a question or topic that's raised, but Mr. Moroli looks like he's about to speak.
The only thing I would say in response to the previous speaker is that, uh, the, the provisions of this particular chapter and section apply only to the position of town administrator. It is a really unique situation, and the previous speaker talking about town funding is correct in most cases. Contracts and union contracts and things are subject to ratification, but what Town Council has explained to me and to the committee is that there's a law unique to this particular position because for some reason the Commonwealth felt and experienced that this position of the town manager or town administrator, uh, is particularly politically charged and can create issues. So as a way to prevent that process and to get good candidates to want to work in public service and do this job, they put this law in place to give the authority to the Board of Selectmen. And if people are unhappy with that, then their alternative is to elect a different Board of Selectmen. But I hope that answered the question, but that's the best I can tell you. We've done diligence on this, and in this case, we're just here trying to protect the interest of the town and doing and do the right thing.
Mrs. Sweet.
Larry Sweet, Fifty Milford Street. Um, I just want to make sure, you said it was a three-year contract that she signed, and I want to know how far into the contract we are with her and how much longer does she have on the contract?
Um, I'll see if somebody wants to answer that. Mrs. Cataldo wants to answer that?
Yes.
Now, before you answer it, Mrs. Sweet, are you referring to the contract she currently has or the one she signed when she came here? Because we're talking to-
It, it did the same line.
How about both?
Oh, okay. The, so the answer then, I believe, is going to be that we're approaching the end of year two.
Yes, and this fiscal year, starting July to June, will be the third year of the contract. Both of the contracts, because they did an amendment. Now, that amendment, I want you to know, refers to all the other parts in the contract remain in existence, which is the part about the town meeting funding. That is Section 14 in the contract. It specifically states in the amendment that all other parts of it remain in effect. And my understanding, and Mr. of the Town Council may correct me, is in order for this to take place, the fact that town meeting has to vote, it has to happen first.
Further discussion. Mr. Moss is our Town Council. He's not a resident, but he's a lawyer, so we like to let the lawyers talk.
Right, Moss, Town Council, uh, disagree. The contract and town meeting are two separate things. Doesn't make difference what order you have in this line. In this case, the contract occurred first.
Is there further discussion? Let's make it, uh, Mrs. Moore, you're going to go first before Mrs. Cataldo. Mrs. Cataldo, it's got to be something new. Okay, but Mrs. Moore's going ahead here.
Sorry, I just want to get clarification because I thought you-
Uh, name and street address?
Oh, sorry, me, I'm 45, I just wanted to get clarification because I feel like I'm hearing two different things. Does the contract require that the, whatever salary was voted by the Selectmen, does the contract require that that gets approved by town meeting, therefore, if it doesn't get approved by town meeting, uh, it doesn't go forward and we're not contractually liable to breach the contract because of, or like I thought I heard someone up there saying, it sounds like that's not an issue because the statute requires, allows the Selectmen to vote on it and therefore rebound by that contract and that salary. Can I just get clarification as to what I'm doing?
Yep, Mr. Schofield, I think you've got your hand up to answer that question.
Rick Schofield, 135 Blackstone Street. Um, and Mr. Moss, please, uh, get up and correct me if I say something wrong here, but, uh, but there's two separate actions here. Action number one is entering into a contract. The Board of Selectmen have full right under the bylaws amended to enter into contracts with employees. To actually pay the contract, you, as the appropriating authority, have to put money in a line item to make good on the contracts that we sign. So it's two separate, two separate actions.
Mrs. Cataldo.
Well, I think my question just got answered because it is town meeting who sets, decides whether or not the contract gets funded. And that last town meeting, taxpayers, I'd like you to know, you voted no, and the amount is still getting paid against town meeting when they voted.
Mr. Schofield.
Yeah, so the Board of Selectmen, just like every other departmental head, has the right to expend the funds legally appropriated to them in the line items at whatever pace they desire, at whatever level they desire. So if we, um, decided at the beginning of the year we wanted to pay Ms. Newman double her salary, we have every right to do that. Now, the negative is, we're going to run out halfway through the year, right? If you don't put money in them. So, um, so what the previous speaker said is, is not correct. We have every right to pay at whatever rate we want.
Mr. Gratter, welcome back.
Miss Mead, my daughter, thirty-two Wood Drive. Um, a lot of discussions so far has sort of been about the operational mechanics to get something approved, but I'd, uh, like everybody to think about the position, the person in the position, what, uh, having worked with her, and what I heard, the chairman's thought, uh, terms of more efficient government, and I heard some of the things that she did this year, I, I can, uh, guarantee you, it's a more efficient government. We have done things in the last two years we never would have done before, whether that's renegotiating, renegotiating medical contracts, uh, putting in a strategic plan around highways with the help of Allen, in conjunction with Adlin, campus studies. This is why, when we hired and filled this position, this is what we wanted. We've got a professional, we've got her in place. I understand that you have a three-year contract. They can always be renegotiated as part of this. Um, and the question I might, last point I would like to ask, if we recently did a comp study for all the positions, was this position included?
Mr. Schofield, I believe you want to answer that?
Rick Schofield, 135 Blackstone Street. Yes, this position absolutely was included. And the interesting thing is that, um, I was on that same committee, by the way, as the previous speaker, setting the salary rates and determining what we should do for the, for the town administrator coordinator. We came up with numbers and comparables, but we were wrong. We were wrong because the compensation salary study said that the salary that, that the town administrator was on prior to us giving her the raise was below the entire fifteen-step range, below the entire fifteen-step range. Okay. Now, the, the salary level that we ended up agreeing to is that, yes, it is at the very top of the range. Now, that was where we decided we're going no further than this. We're not going to go outside. She doesn't take it, then we're done. But we went to the top of the range, and even though it was less than Canton, she wanted to stay the year she took it.
Gentlemen on this side.
Carl Hummel, Fifteen Misco-
Can you closer to the mic?
Carl Hummel, Fifteen Misco Road. I support anybody's right to renegotiate their contract in the middle of a multi-year contract if they discovered that they're worth more than they were originally getting paid. Second, I'm not quite sure why people are making such a big deal over the increase compared to all of the other things we're going to be voting on tonight. And third, I would say that the town has, town meeting has a bad track record of going against town lawyers' recommendations and then causing a lot of financial grief for the town.
All right, I'm going to allow about two more comments because I actually think most of you already know how you want to vote on this, so I don't want to shoot it to death. Mrs. Cataldo?
I just checked to confirm. One, Menden is not the size of Canton. We have a seventeen million dollar budget. The town administrator manages seven because ten million of it goes directly to the school in a monthly check. There is no management of the school fund on the town side. So that's my first point. The second is, the fact that the Board of Selectmen ignored the taxpayers is upsetting to me as a taxpayer and should be to everyone else in this room. I mean, we went out, there were, there were probably ten other people on that salary range who are well below what they should be paid, who have worked for this town for twenty-two and twenty-five years, and because they chose to stay in the town of Menden and work and dedicate their time here, they're not being placed on the top stat level. The only way for them now is to go look for another job and come back and go to Board of Selectmen and say, I can make fifty or twenty thousand dollars somewhere else. I want a raise after they've dedicated their time and their service to this town. That's unjust.
Mark Mortimer, Fourteen Vincent Road. You just mentioned that the, the town administrator manages a seven million dollar budget compared to a ten million dollar budget for the, uh, school superintendent. I'd like to ask what the school superintendent's salary is?
Um, you know what? That's, that's not part of the equation. The question on the floor is whether we amend this salary from here.
Mrs. Cataldo brought that in as a value statement. Uh, she said it was ten million from the town of Menden. I, I understand that, but she made a value comparison between what the town administrator is being paid to manage seven million dollars worth of budget. I'd like to know what the, what the school superintendent is being paid to manage a ten million dollar budget.
Yeah, you know what? Um, I, if, if somebody wants to answer that, I'm okay with it, but I don't really think it's, I actually, you know what? We're not going to answer that question. I think it's out of order. I'm sorry. Mr.-
I have one last-
No, Mrs. Cataldo, you're not next. Mr. Schofield is next. You're okay. Fine. Mrs. Cataldo, you're going to get the last word. That's the last comment. Go ahead. No, you, you get, you can have your final say. You've made the amendment.
When I just said that about the ten million dollars, you have to look at the amount of people also that the school superintendent manages compared to what the town administrator manages in the town of Menden.
Right. We're going to close the discussion now. There's an amendment on the floor. In the Finance Committee recommendation is one hundred and seventy-
I already have a request.
I haven't even gotten there yet. Patience, Mrs. Cataldo. Finance Committee is recommending a salary of one hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and forty-two. Mrs. Cataldo has made an amendment to re- uh, to, uh, strike those words and adjust it to ninety thousand. So that's what we're voting on, is do you want to reduce the salary in the Fincom report from one seventeen to seven forty-two? Depending on how you vote from that, we then have to go and vote that amount in. We actually have to vote this twice, which is unfortunate, but the way it works. Um, Mrs. Cataldo, I already heard you. She'd like to request a-
Mister Tinnian.
Mister Tinnian.
Can you just, you mind if I just clarify, is it yes and a no?
All right. If you vote yes on this particular amendment, you are voting yes to reducing the salary to ninety thousand. So your vote yes is for ninety thousand. Your vote no is to go back and leave it at the amount and vote on that amount. Does everybody understand that? So you know how you're voting. Mrs. Cataldo's requested a secret ballot. I believe we need ten voters to stand up and request that. I see one, two, three, four. I now see at least ten. Fine. So, the way we do a secret ballot here, this is, Fondarenco's going to go set up down there. Again, as I said at the last town meeting, if any of you were here, we're going to kind of do this the way you, uh, take confession at church. we're gonna kind of do this the way you, uh, take confession at church. So, you're gonna get a piece of paper. One side is gonna say yes, the other side is gonna say no. You're gonna tear it in half, you're gonna throw however you want to vote in the box, and you're gonna throw however you don't want to vote in the trash can. They will then count them while we go on. Does everybody understand? We're gonna start with the front row. Um, maybe we should start in the back and have them come down. Does that make sense? How do they do, I, sorry folks, I don't go to church. How do you do it at church? Start in the back or come down? They start in the front. I, I'm told by somebody who does.
No, I don't. But I just go from here.
Mr. Schofield?
Would you, would you make it clear on how to vote? Who specified the number with the, with the, with the yes vote? Who not specified the number? Can you say it again, say in both numbers?
I will make it very clear, but you're only voting on one number. You're voting on $90,000. That's yes. No means we go back to the main article that was proposed by the finance committee and we vote on that number, which is 117,742, or discuss it further. A yes vote is voting to reduce to 90,000. We will start with the front row because Mrs. Rich knows better than me. We're gonna have...
I'd actually like to stop, but these people right here in the front...
Okay, I'm okay with that too. We'll start with the FinCom and the selectmen. The way this is gonna work, you're gonna get up as a row, go get your thing, go back around. I'm gonna ask the side rows to go with the row parallel to you in the middle, so you're going as a group. Does everybody make sense in how we're gonna do this? It's gonna take about 10 minutes if we're nice and orderly? Right. All right, anybody that wants to vote must stay in the room. You may not leave the room for this particular part of the process. You also must have a stamp on your hand that says you're a Mendon resident or voter. If you're not, you won't be allowed to vote. You get one vote, unlike where I grew up in Chicago where we get to vote several times. You can only vote once here. Right. Everybody understand how we vote? Okay. We will proceed now. In the meantime, try to, like, control yourselves. Don't get too wild. Everybody quiet down? Has everybody voted? I believe they have. No? Mrs. Bundrenko? All right, folks. Please get back to your seats. Uh, we open the doors up, you can come back in. Uh, if somebody can put the door stops back and open the doors, that would be great. All right, folks, here's what we're gonna do. When everybody gets their seat, the counters are gonna go over there and count, and we're gonna handle the next articles on the warrant. We're not gonna sit and wait. All right. All right, folks, consent calendar. Consent cal... Uh, wait a minute, I gotta wait for Mrs. Bundrenko. One thing I've learned is that nothing happens unless she's here to help me. Uh, sorry, we're gonna get rid of the, uh, display here. Okay, so that's my daughter. That's, that may be how we all feel, a few hours, if you're still here. All right. Folks, if you get out your warrants and look at them, consent calendar articles are... Uh, no, I'm sorry. Actually, we have one other non-resident, his name is Evan Turner. He's from the solar bylaw. Um, where is Mr. Turner sitting? Right there, okay. So he's all set. Consent calendar. These are articles that we have to vote every year. They don't ever change, it's the same votes. They are articles 2, 5, 6, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 20. I'm not gonna read them all. 2, 5, 6, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 20. So our, uh, we'll briefly just scroll through them. Cyclical, assesses cyclical inspection. They're all in order here, I believe. Article 2, I think we missed article 2. That's the, it was, we still have the list here. It's, uh, chapter 90, money for the highway department. Article 5, article 6 is the valuation account. Amounts are always the same, revolving account for the, uh, TAF library. Um, article 11 is a revolving account for planning board. Article 12 is, uh, highway department revolving fund. Article 13 is conservation revolving fund. 14 is federal state managing grants. And article 20 is land use, approve their land use plan, which programs are in the town clerk's office. If anybody has any questions about any of those, speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. Through consent calendar, we're gonna vote to approve articles 2, 5, 6, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 20. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. They all pass unanimously. Now I have to sign a whole bunch of papers, which I will do... Do you need me to do that now? All right, I'm gonna gather them all up, keep them together, and I'll do them. Um, what's that? Um, this is Maybod, we have your signed land use plan one. You can break that up, please. Uh, revolving account from the TAF library. Somebody from the TAF library needs to come sign that. Do you have one or you want to sign this one? Do you have one?
No, they have one.
So... 11, the planning board. Do you have one signed or you want to sign this one? You got to sign it. So, I'm gonna have you just from right up here and do it up here. 12. 13 is conservation, who signs for them? It's the chairman of the conservation commission here, Mr. Amendola. I'm Ed Lea. Why, he'd make more money if he was Danny Amendola for a change. Planning right here. Do you have the same moves, Mike? 20, land use. Mrs., uh, Maybod, we get that from you? Alan, did you sign the highway one?
Hey, no problem.
Folks, others signed the NAST, so they're guys here. Okay, ready? Article 7, Mr. Maroli.
Mr. Moderator, the Mendon Finance Committee recommends the town pass over this article. An I so moved.
Second.
So discussion?
Although the capital planning committee recommends the town purchase a pool vehicle produced by the building department and the assessors, planning still needs to be completed to determine how the vehicle maintenance will be funded and executed.
So further discussion? Who moved and seconded to pass over article 7? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Is there a may or two in there? No, okay. Hearing's going to...
What?
What? Article 8.
The Mendon Finance Committee recommends the town vote to pass over this article. An I so moved.
Second.
Discussion?
This would have given, uh, matching funding to supplement a grant awarded to the community contact program, but those grants have not been awarded yet, so we don't need the money appropriated yet. We don't know how much it would need to be.
Is there any further discussion? It's moved and seconded to pass over article 18. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Passed unanimously. Article 8. Isn't that what I said? It was article 8. It's what you get for no money, you know? Articles 8.
Mr. Moderator, Mendon Finance Committee recommends the town...
Hang on, one second. Hang on a second. Here's article 8. Put on a second here.
Hey, so, want to take this away?
Yes. All right. We're gonna go back to, uh, article 4 amendment, uh, line item, uh, 199A2. The vote is yes, 77. No, 97. The motion is, the amendment is defeated. Now... We need to go back to the main motion, Mr. Maroli. Do you have it there, side?
You just need that line item, correct?
Just that line item, that's correct.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends that the town set the, uh, town administrator's salary, Department 199, uh, A2, to 117,742, and I so moved.
Second.
We got that written somewhere? Yes, you do, it's already in that old file.
It's in that bylaw.
That was the, that was the original, it gave you the whole breakdown. When they give you article 4, it gave you the breakdown of, of the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
And that is the original amount on the spreadsheet, it's already in there.
Uh, but I need it now in a separate motion. Because that didn't go to separately. While they're writing that out, uh, Mr. Maroli, why don't you have someone else write that out and you can do the discussion part? Do we have a blank, uh, motion for?
Mr. Moderator, as, as explained, the Finance Committee recommends the town support the town administrator's salary at 117,742 as agreed upon in the binding contract negotiated and signed by Mendon Selectmen in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, and the Town Manager Administrative Employment Contracts.
Um, actually, we can use this record?
Second.
Further discussion? It's been moved and seconded, set the town administrator's salary, line item 199A2, at 117,742. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
Passed as by majority. Article 9, Mr. Maroli.
Mendon Finance Committee recommends the town vote to transfer $34,750 of free cash to replace annual retrofit water meters. An I so moved.
Second.
Discussion?
The Mendon Water Department has determined many of the residential meters are in excess of 50 years old and are no longer accurate, resulting in the failure to capture, uh, more than half of the water usage of some ratepayers. Since the town runs the water department, it's the town's responsibility to replace the inaccurate meters. The Water Department has been charging all ratepayers 150% more per cubic foot of water consumed for several years compared to the rate charged to Hope Dale by Mendon. This has resulted in those with newer, accurate meters to be grossly overcharged for water while those with older meters appear to be undercharged. The new electronic meters will allow usage to be monitored in real time, reducing loss and saving the town of Mendon a great deal of money.
So further discussion? It's been moved and seconded, the town vote to transfer $34,750 of free cash to replace annual retrofit water meters. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Passed as by majority. Uh, we have one other non-resident that wants to come in. His name is Gene Pettinelli. There's no objections, he can come in, sit over here and the side over here. Where we're gonna build a wall, prevent everything from coming through. Uh, we're onto article 16, Mr. Maroli. No, I'm sorry. Article 16 is... Mr. O'Brien.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator.
Good evening, Mr. O'Brien.
My name is Ken O'Brien and I'm from, uh, live on Swandale Drive, off Cemetery Street, on the way to the south side of Mendon. The end of the road, our farm will be on the left.
Uh, what's the number, so, so we know where?
Six. Last house on the left. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to increase the amount of qualifying maximum gross receipts to $50,000 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A. An I so moved.
Second.
Watch out for that microphone, Mr. O'Brien.
Well, that's kind of one of the fundamental things that we're not used to, say tell. Thank you.
Wait a minute. Mr. O'Brien, I want, I don't know if anybody can see this.
Ask the town clerk, Mr. Moderator.
This is his signature. Basically, he learned how to do this in kindergarten.
No, it's really, it's when I was following my EKG at the cardiologist.
Go ahead.
For discussion, Mr. Moderator, uh, that, uh, chapter in law permits an elderly taxpayer to delay payment on their property taxes, which ultimately, uh, must be paid and will be paid to the community upon the death of the taxpayer or the sale of a property. Qualified currently, the town amendment permits applicants gross receipts, which is gross income, from all sources not to exceed $20,000 per year. Mass General Law now allows it to go to $40,000.
So further discussion? Oh, are you done, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, sir.
So further discussion? It's been moved and seconded for the town to vote to increase the amount of qualifying maximum gross receipts to 40,000 pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Passed as unanimously. I explained this last time, but I'll explain it again. The reason I get the gavel here after every vote is not just because I like to bang my hammer, but that signifies the time of the vote. I do like to bang a hammer too, and so on. Mr. O'Brien, I think you're up again.
Do you like the bell?
The bell was nice, Mr. O'Brien.
And Mr. Moderator, Ken O'Brien, six Swandale Drive, on the south side of town. I'll, I'm, you know...
You know, I'm thinking that back in whatever time it was that someone like Mr. O'Brien spoke, they had their town meetings in the local tavern.
They'd only move up to the Amity Tavern, right here.
All right.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 60A, Section 1, that allow cities and towns to exempt from excise taxation a motor vehicle owned and registered by, or leased to a Massachusetts president who is on active and full-time military... resident who is on active and full-time military service as a member of the armed forces of the United States, or the National Guard, Army, or Air of any state, and has been deployed or stationed outside the territorial boundaries of the Commonwealth for a period of at least forty-five days in the calendar year of exemption. If the military member is wounded or killed in an armed conflict, they shall not be subject to the foregoing period of service qualification for the calendar year in which they are wounded or killed, and I so move.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. O'Brien. The exemption of excise tax would be for anybody in the military that is going to be serving at least forty-five days outside the Commonwealth in any calendar year. And the point on if they're wounded or killed, that waves the forty-five day period.
So, further discussion? I won't read it all again, because it's longer than I can read at this point. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Article eighteen, don't tell me, Mr. O'Brien.
Mr. Moderator, Ken O'Brien, six Swan Dale Drive, on the south side of town. Art. eighty, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept pursuant to Clause fifty-six of Section five of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, to extend the authority of the assessors to grant rebates, I'm sorry, the words, abatements, to the members of the Massachusetts National Guard or military reservists who are on active duty in foreign countries, with respect to all or part of their real estate and personal property taxes for the fiscal year in which they perform such service, subject to eligibility criteria, to be established by the Board of Selectment, effective fiscal year two thousand seventeen, with set authority to expire after two years of acceptance, unless extended by the vote of the town, and I so move.
Second? Did I make, did I say Board Selectmen?
Yes. Board of Assessors, right there. Wow, who ever's on that one?
I'm glad everybody-
Down with my red hat.
I'm glad everybody's paying attention. Discussion, Mr. O'Brien?
This law permits the town amendment to grant abatements for certain military members based upon criteria established by the Board of Assessors, which is, it's a ninety-day minimum overseas tour, one hundred percent abatement, and they have to be called to active duty under Title ten of the U.S. Code. That would be right into the first paragraph of their orders. And Title ten, it is the authority of the President of the United States to call up reserve forces to go to active combat areas. Anyway, and those ladies and gentlemen that are called up, they're citizen soldiers. Citizen soldiers that, well, we've been familiar with for a long, long time. And here in Menden, being the second oldest town in Worcester County, we know that it goes back to April nineteen, to seventeen seventy-five. One hundred sixty-seven Menden men gathered at Boundless Park, where they marched off to Lexington and Carden, and they wanted to protect and assist their fellow militia, where the shot was heard that went around the world. It is the least that we can do, as they kept us safe from caring back then, and the National Guard Reservists, they continue to keep us safe from caring and other kinds of issues around as they do today. So, this is the least that we can do, our citizen soldiers, so that they know when they're going off, that we as a town are at least protecting them at home.
Further discussion? Mr. Schofield?
I just wanna make a quick point in this, and it doesn't, it doesn't impact the total amount of money that the town amendment is able to collect, when you get to dating everybody else's tax book, just a teeny, teeny bit, it would probably be imperceptible. So, I only say that to say that we're directly giving our military members due to the financial support we do this, and I think that's really important.
Further discussion? Again, I'm not gonna read it all again. All those in favor of Article eighteen, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Article nineteen. Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Moderator, Ken O'Brien, six Swan Dale Drive, the farthest last on the left. I move that the town vote to accept pursuant to Section three E one of Chapter forty-four B of the Massachusetts General Laws, otherwise known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act. The following exemption from the surcharge on real property permitted by said act commence in fiscal year two thousand seventeen, property owners and occupied as domicile by a person who would qualify for low-income housing, or low or moderate-income senior housing, amended, and I so move.
Second? Discussion, Mr. O'Brien?
In two thousand and two, town amended vote to accept the provisions of said section in law, also known as the Community Preservation Act, and in pursuit of that section, we, there's an exemption of one hundred thousand dollars on everybody's house. So, we get close on this, on this question, would alter the acceptance of the CPA Act by adding another exemption to the property tax surcharge imposed under the Act for property owners and occupied as a domicile by a person who would qualify, would qualify for low-income housing, or low or moderate-income senior housing amended. Local adoption of this exemption requires a town meeting vote, and sometime in the future, I think it might be November, that it would be on the ballot at an election.
So, further discussion? I see three hands, I'm gonna start with Mrs. Mazhar.
Anne Mazhar, Fifty Pleasant Street, I just wanted to say that Community Preservation Committee supports this.
Mr. Schofield?
You may answer.
I just want, I wish, one thirty-five blocks on Street, I just wanna say, this is-
Hold that mic closer to you, please.
Okay. Unlike the abatement that I mentioned before in the previous article, this one here does decrease the total amount we collect as CPC funds, but again, it certainly is for a worthy cause.
Mr. Willoughby?
Tony Willoughby, seven November. Can somebody say what that month would be, how much is this gonna affect the CPA?
See if we can get you an answer. Mr. O'Brien?
I would reckon it would depend on how many people would apply for it.
So, it's an unknown at this point?
It's an unknown. But I would say that to a previous speaker's point, the money that's raised under the CPA, if the money's not raised, the money is not proportionally attributed to anybody else. It's just money that's not raised. And then the state would, when they give us the matching, it's a little bit less. I do not anticipate it to be a lot less.
Mr. Reddick?
Kevin Reddick, forty-six Cape Road, just to clarify what my fellow assessor's saying, this is the three percent surcharge that everyone sees on their tax bill and usually crumbles about. The primary effect of this would be take people age sixty and above, and allow them to apply for an abatement of that three percent tax on their tax bill, provided they meet the income criteria. The income criteria is very generous. A family of one person over the age of sixty, making less than, I believe it's eighty thousand dollars qualifies. People will have to fill out an application that is one hundred percent confidential. That seems to be the biggest barrier to people applying for the exemptions they're entitled to, is wanting to fill out the form. But the idea is that anybody over the age of sixty who meets the financial criteria can now apply for the abatement to get that off your tax bill. And this and the preceding four articles are part of a package we put together, taking into account the fact that people's taxes were not granted a lot this year, and we wanted to make sure we were offering every single abatement and exemption allowed into law, and this one we did not do, so we have it, and it will be on the November ballot as well, because when we approved the CPA, it was approved in the town meeting, and it balanced, it has to be amended that way. And we urge you to approve this, because quite a lot of people in the town, they could benefit from this, should they apply.
So, further discussion? Again, I'm not gonna read the whole thing again, I think you guys can all read. All those in favor of Article nineteen, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Article twenty-one, Land Use Committee, Mrs. Mazhar.
The Land Use Committee recommends that the town transfer two thousand four hundred dollars from the Menden Land Bank, with an additional nine thousand dollars being contributed from the trustees of reservations, to fund the removal of the non-native invasive water chestnut weeds in Inman Pond on the Meadow Brook Woods property in the spring/summer of two thousand sixteen, and I so move.
Second? Alright, Mrs. Mazhar, I'm gonna let you do your discussion, and then I'm gonna do a FinCom recommendation when you're done.
The private nonprofit trustees of reservations is funding nine thousand dollars towards this job, which is eighty percent of the total. Two thousand four hundred would come from the Menden Land Bank, which is comprised of private funds, so zero tax dollars are required or would need to be spent, and the money is in the account. This would be the seventh year removal. The project has lasted longer than projected. Unfortunately, when the weeds were recanted and removed the first year, they found a large seed bed and worms, plants estimated. The worm summer weather has encouraged growth. Sixty tons of plant matter was removed the first year. If the town did not take on this project, the pond would eventually die, and it would have been a great loss to wildlife and passive recreation. However, each year, there are less and less weeds. Initially, nine acres, I mean, eight acres of the nine acres of the pond were covered densely with the weed. With the weed removal, now, zero acres have dense coverage, and only three acres have moderate coverage, and the rest are sparse to none, which is a marked improvement. At this point, the Land Use Committee does not want to stop the project, or revert back to full weed coverage. There is an end in sight for this project, for volunteers who can pull the weeds annually, like the garden, to prevent the weed from coming back. This is the last time that we plan, and bringing this vote to town meeting, and we'll look for private sources to fund this project in the future if necessary.
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously does not support the expenditure of the twenty-four hundred dollars, since it is the seventh year of a project, it was only supposed to take a year or two. We're not sure that it's ever gonna stop the weeds, so we did not support this expenditure.
Mr. Moroli, I need your written side, FinCom recommendation? Alright, so, further discussion? It's been moved and seconded, the town vote to transfer twenty-four hundred dollars from the Menden Land Bank. I'm sorry, there is discussion. Mrs. Vandenberg? I'd actually prefer that you go to the mics, everybody can hear you. I can hear you from there, but nobody else can.
I know from my own experience, and I'm sure that most of you who've had ponds, or any other kind of place where not normal growth takes place, that if you don't keep up with it, it does come back and completely cover, so you're back where you started in the first place. It does seem to me that we're talking about a very low amount of money to prevent having to spend whatever six times that money would be again.
So, further discussion? Mr. Tinio?
Longy Tinio, thirteen North Ave, one of the main reasons that we chose, went down this path was because the Lake Nipmuck can't use these funds to prevent the weed growth there. So, this was supposed to be a quick fix for the pond, is now becoming an ongoing maintenance thing that should be transferred over the same way that we do Lake Nipmuck.
Mrs. Mazhar?
Anne Mazhar, Fifty Pleasant Street, this is different than the Nipmuck Pond, because there is an end in sight, and it would be volunteers that would handpick the sparse weeds that would be on the pond would make a great improvement. I mean, it was eight acres of densely covered, you know, weeds in the pond, and now we're down to zero, and then, you know, three with moderate, and then the rest trace and sparse. So, there is an end in sight, and at this point, if we did nothing, it would all come back. But once you get on top of it, it'll just take volunteers to do some handpicking, which we are organizing now.
Further discussion? Alright, it's been moved and seconded, the town vote to transfer twenty-four hundred dollars from the Menden Land Bank, with an additional nine thousand being contributed from the trustees of the reservations to move, to fund the removal of the non-native invasive water chestnut weeds in the Inman Pond on the Meadow Brook Woods property in the spring/summer two thousand sixteen. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes by majority. Article twenty-two.
Anne Mazhar, Fifty Pleasant Street, the Community Preservation Committee recommends the town transfer twenty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Affordable Housing Account to renew the position of part-time affordable housing coordinator for FY seventeen, and I so move.
Second? Again, I'm gonna have Mrs. Mazhar do her discussion, then I'll do a FinCom recommendation?
This is to pay for Bill McHenry's salary. There would be no new taxpayer dollars required, since the funds are in the CPA Affordable Housing Account and designated only for affordable housing. The following are examples of people who need affordable housing amended. Young couples both working, wanting to buy a starter home, students graduating from BBT, working on electrical apprenticeship or other trade, teachers who want to live in the town they work, single professionals, college graduates wanting to live independently, older couples with children, out of that home, and wanting to downsize. You probably personally know people who fit in these categories, and we're not meeting the needs of many of these people. We're talking about people who have jobs and are looking to find an affordable residence in Menden. To qualify for low-income affordable housing in Menden, we're talking about a single person who makes sixty-two thousand dollars a year or less, or a family of four with an income of eighty-nine thousand dollars a year or less. An affordable housing coordinator can help Menden plan for its future housing possibilities that fit in with Menden's population and Menden's character. If Menden does not plan for affordable housing, developers will through unfriendly forty-b projects where the town has no control over the development. Bill McHenry has figured out much of the complexities of the laws, built an excellent network of people and organizations throughout the state, and applied for grants, and now has several opportunities for Menden. Because of Bill's work, Menden was selected by the Mass Housing Partnership to be offered free technical assistance to help Menden design quality affordable housing. This led to a twenty-five thousand dollar PATH grant. Menden needs the position, and Bill's expertise, so that he can carry out the projects and use the grant funding. It would be a ways to train someone and then not continue the position. One project that's being worked on is at the town-owned Fifty-two Providence Street property, that's by the senior center. Small, one-to-two-bedroom, attractive, affordable homes could be built that would be pedestrian-friendly, handicap-accessible, landscaped nicely, have walking paths to the open space and the senior center, and the project would put some of the town-owned land back on the tax roll. The twenty-five thousand dollar grant would help develop design standards, gain needed approvals, help to guide the preparation, and will provide guidelines to make projects successful. In order for projects to coordinate with Menden's needs, we need an affordable housing coordinator. Again, if Menden does not plan our own affordable housing, developers will through the unfriendly forty-b projects, where towns have little or no control, and our zoning laws can be bypassed. We need an affordable housing coordinator to use the funds effectively that we have in the affordable housing account. And I just wanted to think, before we had Bill in the position, nothing was done to work on new affordable housing. So, if we don't have his position, then nothing will be done, and we'll have the money in the account.
Mr. Moroli, Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee universally rejected the expenditures twenty thousand dollars for a sixth year. For five years, twenty thousand a year was expended. The plan initially was to pay for somebody to become educated in this area, and Mr. McHenry's done an excellent job of that, but we're at the point where we've gathered information, it's been passed on, and at least our understanding is that the town works with the developers, and that the position's not necessary. So, the FinCom voted not to support this recommendation of spending twenty thousand dollars, again.
Mr. Rodden.
Kevin Rodden, forty-six Cape Road. I've kind of been against funding this position in the last couple of years, but we're getting to fruition on a project, and I'm seeing the utility of having somebody do this. Let's face it, folks, if we don't have a town planner, if we don't have a town engineer, if there's nobody in charge of it, nothing's going to get done. So if we want to take our destiny in our hands, and by the way, being proactive about affordable housing is a legal defense if a developer comes in here with a fortyB, which if you don't know, means they can change our zoning and our planning board subdivision rules and regulations. If the town turned that down and it was appealed, having done proactive things by the town is a defense, supporting the town turning down something you don't want. If we get rid of this position when we're about ready to do something, we all know nobody will do it. It'll be just what it was before he was there. Nobody will do it. We'll have developers coming in, nobody will be an expert, nobody will do anything, and what will we do then? Well, hire outside consultants to take money to help advise us, because we threw this out for short money. I'm in favor of it.
So further discussion. If you want to speak, come to the microphone.
Lonny Tinio thirteen North Ave. I was a part of the team that was on the split selection when we did this, hired this position. Again, it's been six years. There's been definite, Mr. McHenry has done a wonderful job getting up to speed, talked to him about certain things, and his knowledge on it is great. This is a position that we could put back into play if we needed to. At the same time, we don't have a big run on affordable housing amended. We had a subdivision come in, they went through the promotions, they had conventional fortyB in the front, they had an over fifty-five in the back, and since then, the over fifty-five went away because there was no draw for it, went to regular fortyB homes in there. The rest of the subdivision has been turned over to conventional subdivision, because there was even no draw for the rest of the fortyB. So, again, there's not a huge draw from what we can see, but, again, if you want to spend the twenty grand, that's fine.
Bill Terry in twenty-eight Oakdale Street. My question was, usually with affordable housing, you end up with clustering, which that's how you get the thing. But is there that much land with water and sewage that they can do affordable housing?
Yeah, it's a little bit off-topic. I mean, the topic here is whether we want to fund a house, affordable housing coordinator, but I'm going to let Mr. Tinio's guys hand up, so I'm going to let him answer it anyway.
I'll be brief. Lonny Tinio thirteen North Ave. Affordable housing is not as far as you're thinking, tenement buildings or something along those lines. These are regular twenty-five hundred square foot homes that are being built, and they have to look exactly like the market rate homes that are going in, so that there's not clustering, so that you don't have, so that you don't know, you're not supposed to know that that was an affordable home. Only the people that buy it are supposed to, it's done through a lottery process. It's not, again, tenement homes where you're going to have a public sewer system, you know, public, there could be, I mean, that's all up to the, when you're building your subdivision plan, but...
Go ahead.
No, my thing is, you need, like, neighbor at least, to take and do this on, you know, if you've got septic in a well, you can't put it right next to each other. So I just don't know if, I was wondering if there was room to do all this.
Right, so, again, I guess I would tell you that I understand what you're asking, but the article on the floor is whether we want to fund twenty thousand to pay a house, affordable housing coordinator through the community reservation account. It's really not what's going to get developed or what are those locations for it. If you're speaking specifically to that, Mr. Schofield, you have your hand up. He's looking at me because I typically don't pay attention with Mr. Schofield when he raises his hand.
You always miss me.
I always miss you, I do miss you, Mr. Schofield. Isn't that nice?
Rich Schofield, one thirty-five Blackstone Street. I don't want to dismiss the logic of our finance committee, I totally understand and respect their position. I'm a little bit of two minds, but I wanted to point out two things. Thing number one is that your CPA surcharge, that you get charged every year, ten percent of that has to go into affordable housing, so we can't spend it on anything else. So if we don't spend the twenty thousand dollars and continue to pursue this, it still sits in there and does not much of anything unless we spend it. So that's number one. Number two, I want to say that I've attended a string of meetings with Mr. McHenry. Can I say his name? I don't want to say if he was speaking, is he in speaker?
Okay, I'm going to make a special rule draft for you.
Okay, good. And we, and I went to a string of meetings, and the rules and laws and their options and the capabilities are phenomenally complex. I can't believe how much there was doing. So back to the previous speaker that was talking about where you could put things, that's the least of the problem with the complexity to it. I mean, it's unbelievable the complexity. So while I certainly understand that the impasses would have taken so long, I grew a new appreciation as to why, having attended all of that. So I just think it's something to consider.
Further discussion. It's been moved in second, it's, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Schofield, oh, it's a family thing.
Kathy Schofield, one thirty-five Blackstone Street, Menden. I just wanted to reiterate what Rich said, that...
No, no, a previous speaker, you don't know him.
I wanted to keep up all the talk from here, that one.
Yeah, that one.
But I've had the opportunity to work with Bill as well, through the historical commission, through the master planning commission. It is an extremely complex situation, affordable housing, and it changes on a dime. So not staying on top of that could really hurt us in the long run. Playing catch-up to this point has been, I'm sure, a lot of what, you know, Mr. McHenry's had to do, and, I mean, I would support, you know, funding him to continue working for us.
So further discussion, is there another Schofield of Montes Steeves? Mr. Tinio.
Lonny Tinio thirteen North Ave. I don't think it has anything to do with the complexity, I don't think it has anything to do with Mr. McHenry's abilities. I think it's great. I think that what you really need to look at is we've been spending twenty thousand dollars a year, and we've got the education that we've needed, but there's nothing, affordable has not increased in Menden, there's not a big draw for it, we don't have people banging down the doors to do it. So I really think that that's easy to get into account.
Mrs. Mazer, and I think this will be the last comment.
In Mazer fifty Pleasant Street, I just want to make clarification, he hasn't been in the position for six years. I think it's three. I think it's three.
Where are we in our information?
Yeah.
Okay, well, it doesn't matter.
And also, the previous speaker spoke about not needing affordable housing, and that's because through fortyBs, that's not the best way to have affordable housing, and there's many creative ways that you can have lovely, smaller homes that would be wonderful for, you know, families and people that want to downsize. It doesn't have to be apartments, or, you know, there's just a lot of options, and an affordable housing coordinator is really helpful in guiding us through this.
All right, we're done discussing. It's been moved in second as the town votes to transfer twenty thousand dollars from the community preservation affordable housing accounts to renew the position of the part-time affordable housing coordinator for fiscal year two thousand seventeen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes by majority. You know, I do have a question, you'll have to pardon me, but that to the water chestnuts, if we had a Chinese restaurant in town, could we sell them in Midtown? No? It's too bad, huh? We used to have a Chinese restaurant, I mean, is it the same thing? Not even the same thing, really. All right, never mind.
The reason is, you're proud, I live in Menntown, demonic reason.
Article twenty-three, Mrs. Mazer.
The community preservation recommends that the town pass over this article at Isomole. Agreed.
Discussion, Mrs. Mazer.
An engineering study hasn't been done yet, so we're just waiting for that to be done.
Is there further discussion? It's been moved in second to pass over Article twenty-three, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Article twenty-four, Mrs. Mazer.
The community preservation committee recommends that the town vote to transfer one thousand dollars from the community preservation historical account to restore the nineteen sixty-seven town amended three-hundredth anniversary sixteen-millimeter film at Isomole. Agreed.
Discussion, Mrs. Mazer. Okay, discussion, Mr. Byer.
Dan Byer, Two Barrows Road. So this is to restore and digitize a seventy-minute film of the town's three-hundredth anniversary that was from nineteen sixty-seven. The film was, we basically spent months searching for this film, we found a whole bunch of references to it, it was finally located. We currently don't really have the technology to play it anymore, it's in really rough shape, it's in danger of disintegrating to the point that it won't be watchable anymore. So we'd like to preserve the film so that it's available for everyone, and also as part of a three-fiftieth, we hope to hold several screenings of the film.
So further discussion. Say what? This isn't one of those films like those film strips when I was in school that goes from, when you take them out? It is.
Two giant wheels, it's like two thousand-ounce deal.
Okay, never mind. It's been moved in second as the town, oh, I'm sorry, so more discussion? Oh, yeah. Okay, so I forgot one today. FinCom recommendation, Mr. Morley.
Finance committee does support this article unanimously.
Okay, is there other further discussion? All right, it's been moved in second as the town votes to transfer one thousand dollars from the community preservation committee historical account to restore the nineteen sixty-seven town amended three-hundredth anniversary sixteen-millimeter film. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Article twenty-five.
The community preservation committee recommends that the town transfer forty thousand dollars from the CPA open space account and fifty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars from the CPA budgeted reserve to fund the FY seventeen Pino debt exclusion at Isomole. Agreed.
Finance committee also supports this article.
Oh, giving it first, huh? Is there any further discussion on this? I'm not going to read the whole thing again, article twenty-six, right? Is it wrong? No, we're on twenty-five, sorry. Where did you just? Oh, okay, it's been moved in second as the town votes to transfer forty thousand dollars from CPA open space account and fifty-eight thousand three ninety-seven from CPA budgeted reserve to fund the FY seventeen Pino debt exclusion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Now we're on Article twenty-six. This says board of selectmen, as far as the motion. Are you guys awake over there?
I'm thinking about a lot of things here. Article twenty-six, I move that the town vote pursuant to national law chapter fifty-nine, section thirty-eight H, and/or any other enabling authority to ratify, approve, and approve, and/or draw up, by the board of selectmen, to negotiate and enter into on such terms and conditions as the board of selectmen deems in the best interest of the town, the so-called payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement with the BWC Wading River LLC or its affiliate with respect to payments for a subcertain in lieu of real and/or personal property taxes owed to the town over a twenty-year period relative to a proposed solar electric generating facility at one twenty-eight Providence Street, sixty-seven Bay Street, seventy-two Fair Road, Mendon Mass, year one seven five six, with an option for extension and termination with release of said parcel, and to authorize the board of selectmen to take such actions and execute any necessary documents relating thereto or app, or do anything in relation thereto.
Discussion, Mr. Rio.
This article enables the board of selectmen to negotiate what is known as a pilot agreement, which stands for payment in lieu of taxes. These types of agreements are done in calculation of personal profit taxes for solar businesses because they are uniquely difficult to determine the value of. So rather than go through the extraordinarily painful exercise of calculating the value every year, the board of selectmen can negotiate a flat rate payment each year. To be clear, this is neither, this neither is nor is meant to be a tax break, it is merely for simplification purposes only.
Is there further discussion? All right, I'm not going to read this whole one again either. All those in favor of Article sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I'm losing my mind here. Okay, all those in favor of Article twenty-six, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Article twenty-seven.
I move that the town vote to authorize board of selectmen to execute a so-called ascent agreement by whatever name called for the property at thirty-six Milkwood Street, Mendon Mass, year one seven five six, on such terms and conditions as the board of selectmen deems in the best interest of the town, and to further authorize board of selectmen to take such actions and execute the necessary agreements relating to a proposed solar electric generating facility at said property, or take any action in relation thereto.
Agreed.
Go ahead, Mr. Rio, discussion.
This article has been included out of an abundance of caution by Blue Wave due to their concern, and previous articles on the solar installation were not broad enough to enable the board of selectmen to enter into all the small secondary agreements required to make the solar installation a reality. It is of, it is the opinion of the board of selectmen and the town council that previously voted articles were broad enough, however, to eliminate all doubt satisfied Blue Wave, we have put forth this article to achieve two goals. First is to enable us to enter into an agreement between and among National Grid, Blue Wave, and the town to allow Blue Wave to do work in time to time as required in National Grid's pre-existing easement. This is what was referenced in the motion as the ascent agreement. Second is to provide broad enough language to empower the board to enter into any other secondary, any other such secondary agreements as required to complete the solar installation.
Second. Is there further discussion? All right, not going to read this one again either. All those in favor of Article twenty-seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Article twenty-eight.
I move that the town vote to accept as publicly as within the town amended the streets known as Warfield Road, Russell Court, Haywood Circle, and a portion of Puffer Drive, the Poplar's Mill subdivision, as laid out by the board of selectmen, provided, however, that the owners of the properties comprising said streets provide to the town in need of or certificate or title acceptable to the board of selectmen with respect to the fee, easement, interest, and our rights in the roadways to be conveyed to the town and pays all costs and recording expenses related here too, and provided that all of the requirements of the planning board have been met or taken in relation, action in relation thereto.
Discussion.
Roads listed above, the roads that I responded above are part of Poplar's Mill subdivision, the roads must be approved at town meeting for formal adoption.
So further discussion. It's been moved in seconded. Article twenty-eight, again, I'm not going to read it again. All those in favor of Article twenty-eight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Article twenty-nine. This is a citizen's petition, so the citizens that proposed it should be making the motion. And you don't have to read this entire, you basically say, you know, I move as written in the warrant.
Cheryl Andrews, one Swan Dale Drive, Mendon. I knew that the town vote to amend the Mendon zoning bylaws is written.
No, it's written in the warrant, that's good enough. Oh, hang on, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I need a copy of the...
Sorry?
Oh, yeah. Hang on one second here. First of all, I need a copy of your motion. You have to, it's got to be signed and dated. You have to, uh, it's gotta be signed and dated. Can I get a planning board recommendation on this, please? Can I get a planning board recommendation, please? Has the planning board actually made a recommendation to vote it on?
Uh, yes, we have voted on it. It's where you, yeah. Planning board approved to, uh...
Can you stand up there with my, say your name and street, all the, all the real stuff?
Dylan Bosino, eighty-six Marrow Street, uh, it's Planning Board Chair. Yes, we did vote on this, uh, citizen's petition, uh, it was reviewed by the, by the large review committee, and we made sure, um, you know, all the label, uh, diagram was there, and we agreed to, uh, pass it to move it to Town Board so the town could pay the vote on.
All right, so the planning board supports this, right?
Um, particularly...
No, no, I'm, it's just yes or no, yes you do or no you don't?
No, we don't.
The planning board does not support it, so your recommendation is no, all right, I'm gonna go back to her for a discussion before you can give your explanation.
My husband and I, uh...
Could you get closer to the mic, please, and speak loudly?
My husband and I are authors of the citizen petition to prohibit the citing of large-scale solar facilities in the rural residential zone in Mendon. Uh, first of all, I just wanna say, we're not anti-solar, we just want it properly cited. Um, second, we have nothing to gain from this bylaw. Um, the damage to our neighborhood has already been done. Um, in March, a special permit for large-scale solar was granted by the planning board to be built on one of the most scenic areas in Mendon, the Barney Farm on Providence Street. We chose to initiate this petition to protect other Mendon residents from the ordeal that we went through. Uh, once the special permit is granted, the only recourse a neighborhood has is to go to court, an expensive and time-consuming option. Uh, one attorney that I consulted, um, told me that solar companies built the cost of litigation into their project, so you're going up a steep hill if you wanna fight on the means. Our experience began with a solar company that held an informal meeting four days before Christmas in Hope Creek. When the public hearings were finally held, we raised normal, we raised numerous questions about potential hazards, zoning issues, character preservation, environmental impacts, and impact on property values. Along with our neighbors, we spent weeks doing research on the issues and submitted documents supporting our opposition to this project. To us, an industrial power plant did not belong in a rural residential zone. It became apparent during the hearings that the only way to make sure one of these facilities does not get built in the zone was to prevent them, prohibit them outright. But whose requirements for a special permit weren't enough protection. During the first public hearing, we had no trouble getting the requisite signatures needed for the petition. The zoning change is only for large-scale solar in the rural residential zone, it does not change any of the other types of solar facilities contained in the zoning table of uses. Current bylaw prohibits large-scale solar from being located in a residential subdivision, but the law lacks sufficient protection to prevent it from being adjacent to a subdivision. In our neighborhood, the planning board approved a large-scale facility to be built a mere fifty feet from the property line of one of our neighbors. Our petition would prohibit large-scale facilities from being built within five hundred feet of a residential subdivision. You may hear from others speaking tonight that large-scale solar facilities in residential zones violates Mass General Law forty-eight, Section three, which says the bylaw can't prohibit solar energy systems except where necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare. But this law was passed in nineteen eighty-five, well before the large-scale facilities even existed. To see how the state views the citing of such facilities now, you can look at the Mass Department of Energy Resources, the twenty-fourteen Model Solar Bylaw document, which states in part, "The Department of Energy Resources strongly discourages locations that result in significant loss of land and natural resources, including farm and forest land," exactly what got passed here, "and encourages rooftop citing as well as locations in industrial and commercial districts or on vacant preserved land." The model bylaw also is structured so that large-scale facilities are totally prohibited in one of its residential zones and by special permit in the other. You may also hear that all the towns that deny permits get sued and lose, but there have been few actual cases in Massachusetts, and they're mixed bag. Some neighborhoods win, such as Hatfield, some solar companies win. It's not settled law, in my research, and did some real, believable research on it, I did not see one case brought by a solar company challenging a bylaw that prohibited large scale in a residential zone. Prior to submitting this petition, I contacted the municipal law unit of the Attorney General's Office and asked if they approved zoning bylaws that prohibit large-scale solar from residential zones in, I was told, all the town. There have been over fifty-three towns that have passed solar bylaws and that were approved by the Attorney General's Office, and twenty-three of them had restrictions on districts where the solar could be replaced. A lot more work needs to be done on the coming bylaw, but in the meantime, I'm asking that you vote to prohibit it in the rural residential zone until things get fixed. Thank you.
Mr. Bosino, I assume you wanna continue, or are you done?
Actually, I'm gonna let, uh, just walk.
Okay. I would encourage everybody to be as brief as possible in your comments.
Thank you, Patrick Doherty, forty-eight Park Street. Um, I, I agree with, with the previous speaker's statements, uh, to some extent. One thing I would like to note, though, is Mendon is unique in that, you know, I would say more than ninety percent of our land that grows is, is own rural residential. So we're, we're prohibiting it in rural residential district, we're prohibiting it nearly all places in town. Um, there are very many large tracks on the road where it may be appropriate. You know, as a bylaw committee member, we, we did review this and, and we took some of these permits in, uh, during our review. Our, our general business district, our highway business district, and our general residential district are, you know, really will give, for the most part, from a two-hundred-foot setback to a sixteen, one forty, uh, portion of Providence Road and, and portion of, uh, heart of that town and that. So that, that's the only places where we would be able to be cited if, um, if, if this, this war article is passed. We, we believe that it would probably be better served for this to go back to the bylaw review committee and maybe take into account some comments that came up during the, the public hearing process for the, for the project that was cited. Um, I think that it would probably be better served, it would really increase setback distances, um, better than firing buffers or screen. I don't think that it's appropriate to exclude this from, from ninety percent of the area.
Mr. Hodgins.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Mr. Moderator, I support the citizen petition. The citizen petition grows out of an effort to place a solar facility on the Barney Farm. Approximately twelve acres of blast on the farm. That was passed unanimously by a special permit by the planning board, over, I might add, the objections of the residents in the area. The proposed citing that ultimately was approved first was in a rural residential area. This is an industrial use, it's a power plant. It doesn't belong in a rural residential area. I urge you to support this, thank you.
Mr. Bartow.
Red Farfell, fifty Asylum Street, um, I have to confess to some controversy about what, what all these, uh, sort of alphabet soup means up here. Under the, on the line sixty-seven B, um, it, it talks about ground-mounted accessory, non-residential, and accessory residential facilities. So I personally own a ground-mounted facility on my, on my residential property, and it sounds to me like, like if I were trying to build that under this rule, uh, on line sixty-seven B, I would've had to get an SPR, whatever that is. Is, can, can somebody explain to me what an SPR is?
I believe it's a special permit. Cyc-plant review, thank you, Mr. Bosino.
Thank you.
Mr. Cinnion. Quick question, um, exactly what is being changed in here, um, is, oh, actually, I'm sorry.
Never mind.
Right there.
This is Emily Latilla over here.
Sorry, uh, La, Laetina thirteen North Ave. Um, I've just been cautious about what we're about to do here. Um, don't, we've been hearing a lot about what people living next door are gonna have to deal with or what they might see. Uh, there was a lot of effort put into this, uh, the, the way they developed this, so that you, you're not supposed to see this, and more than likely, you probably won't. But keep in mind that that land was all farmland, and now these people own all this land, and what are they doing with it, because we don't farm as much as we do soon. So they found another use for it, and don't, don't forget, you know, about them that are trying to, to continue to make money along with what they, what they have for land. So we could have a big, huge subdivision there and keep, and adding in another two hundred homes. But again, we're gonna put in this, it's gonna generate clean energy, it's not a big industrial power plant spinning out carbon into the air, it's clean energy that you shouldn't even see.
Mr. Rodden.
Kevin Rodden, forty-six Caper Road, with all due respect to the advocates of this, when I think of an industrial power plant, I think of the American National Gas Facility on National Street in Milford. I think of the plant over the town line in Blackstone, I think of the two in Bellingham. The last thing I would ever associate with the phrase industrial power plant is a solar array. All solar arrays do have a transformer box that filled with them, and the size depends on the size of the full, the solar field. They are not industrial power plants. They are not large-scale machinery with smokestacks thirty-four feet in the air requiring tankers of water to cool off like the gas-fired power plants are. They're not the coal-fired plants like the one in Somerset that's being closed. Have you ever driven down the New Jersey Turnpike and seen all those power plants? They're not done. Are they acres of glass? Yeah, but you know what? They're not houses, they're clean energy, which lowers our rates, and they're providing tax revenue to the town with no large expenses in return, the way houses do. Please, don't be fooled by calling these industrial power plants. They're the first thing from them, and if that's the argument they're using to get you to vote for this, shame on them.
Mr. Bosino. Couple more comments and then we're gonna vote on this.
When we originally tackled this bylaw, uh, it's gone through a couple revisions of what it is. The bylaw review committee has worked extremely hard. Um, as a planning board, I, the town, uh, you know, we're looking out for the town's best interests in future planning, that goes with the people who own the property and your voters. So we obviously, when we're writing bylaws to the community, we take it very seriously that we're putting together bylaws, and there are some restrictions in this bylaw, people rarely read it one mile radius, so we don't have them everywhere. But realistically, a community needs to put some type of plan in place, and, and we spend a lot of time doing that. Uh, the bylaw review committee did, you know, did a lot of extensive work, and keep in mind, the bylaws before, before the town, they can't be unreasonable. Uh, she cited Section three of, uh, forty-eight, MBL forty-eight, which specifically tells you when, uh, on solar issues that the bylaw cannot be unreasonable. It will be challenged if you do make it unreasonable. All our bylaws have an opportunity, as we have found out in the past, and I don't have to relive any of those examples, but we found out in the past that a bylaw can be challenged, and it costs an awful lot, the town an awful lot of money to defend it. So when we're developing these, we keep that in mind, we keep the property owners, if it was your property, uh, that, that you wanted to do something on, we're not gonna let a power plant go there. And to, to the previous speaker's argument of, uh, industrial power plant, um, you know, they do, we're not developing that type of plan for the community. We're developing a plan that's gonna allow commercial, uh, development in unexposed areas, I mean, like he said, what we're looking at now is they have to be on, within a two-hundred-foot setback, you can see every single one of them. If you're driving down Word sixteen, if you're driving down one forty, they gotta be in the two-hundred-foot setback, you're gonna see every single one. So we try and plan, and I thought the development of where this one was at, um, you know, through the public hearing, and I think the closest, uh, you know, the, the fifty-foot string is pretty good on the side of it, uh, that, of the, closest to butter. Across at the field is almost six hundred and fifty feet away, I think the closest residence. I, I think a lot of thought went in to keeping this, I think the Barney's made it, uh, clear.
All right, Mr. Bosino, let's stick to this amendment, please, I don't believe this amendment has any impact on that project whatsoever, am I correct?
Well, I think it rose out of that.
I understand what the impact just was, but that project's been approved, so let's focus on this amendment, and let's kind of wrap it up.
I, I mean, I just wanted to give you background, we, we take writing these bylaws here as, I don't, uh, come up here to complain to this community, uh, just to generate paperwork and, and have to fight on Town Board. We work hard to give you good bylaws and try and represent the community.
Mr. Hodgins, let me give you the last word unless there's something new.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Um, Mr. Moderator, the, if a large-scale solar opaic facility and actually required an exception to the definition of a power plant in the bylaws, that's number one. Number two, it's of, this proposed amendment has no impact whatsoever on the power plant that has been approved. What this is designed to do is to save the next neighborhood amendment from dealing with the same issue where it's next door to residences, which is inappropriate, thank you.
All right. It's gotta be brand-new information, nothing that's been said yet tonight. Now, go to the microphone, 'cause I can't, even I can't hear you.
I just wanna make it clear because of one of the other questions. On that chart, the only thing that's changing is that N, under the rural residential, all of the rest of that is existing bylaw.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. It's been moved and seconded to amend the Mendon zoning bylaws as written in the warrant posted on the screen, there's actually a bit more down there. In order for this to be approved, we need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion is defeated by majority. Okay. Article thirty, um... Folks, we're not quite done yet, I know you're all itching to get home, but we got one more article to handle, I don't know who is making this motion. I've seen something circulating that this was being passed over, if that's the case, maybe the Board of Selectmen can do that, if it's not the case... What?
So, I, I move to pass over this article?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, so this, Mr. Solfield, would you please give me a reason for passing over?
Yeah, Board of Selectmen received, um, sorry, just hold for one thirty-five seconds, please, the Board of Selectmen received a, a written notification from Mr. Brazza that, um, he wished to pursue what he was looking to do in a different manner and, uh, requested to pass over.
All right. It's removed and seconded, so the person that was requesting this petition has requested to pass over, is there any further discussion on that? It's removed and seconded to pass over Article thirty, all those in favor, say aye? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Schofield, I need you to sign this, please. All right, we...
Moved to solid art.
Second. What? Everybody's all set? We've got a motion.